Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment. Does anybody have anything to talk about that's not on the agenda? Don's not here. Luann, do you want to introduce Megan here?
I certainly could, sure. This is Megan Donahue for all of you. She is your administrative intern that we hired to help me with some of my tasks and duties. So I had her come to the meeting tonight and then we're gonna... I've got her on the work session and I want some ideas from you of some tasks and things that too would like to see her work on. She already started working on the newsletter. We're gonna do a communications plan. And then we'll start working on budgets together too so that she can learn about budgets. So we'll see what happens, but hopefully you have some ideas also.
Welcome to the team.
Thanks.
Have fun. All right, consent agenda. 4.1, approval of the minutes for the May 11th, 2015 regular council meeting. 4.2, approval of the minutes for the April 14th, 2015 park board meeting. 4.3, additional claims for the month of May. Is there anything that needs to be talked about, discussed, or pulled out of the consent agenda? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Staff report. Public works.
Madam Chair, you have... Council members, you have Public Works Kyle Coons' report in front of you. Kyle is also in attendance in the audience tonight, so I'm sure that he would be happy to answer any questions that you have about his report.
I want to make a comment on the sign. It looks really awesome. I noticed it and I'm like, "It looks different." I really like it. And then when I saw it on here, I'm like, "Yeah, it is a big improvement." It was very noticeable.
I wanted to do that in the first place.
Yeah, it looks... It really pops, the sign. I don't know if you guys have seen it. It's so nice.
Yeah, it does. It's look...
Anything else from you, Kyle? Do you want it? Good.
When is the fence? I saw you have the posts up.
Yep, yeah, I thought they were going to be here today, but I think the rain got in the rain. Hopefully this is something that comes.
And are they gonna do the... I didn't see if they had put marks for the...
Yep.
Do you want to share about the mower you were trying out or not?
Well, yeah, Farm Supply last week they called me. I was doing with them that they got a demo over a tree in on a bat wing mower. And it's a 15-foot long and I've been using it in the parks. I used it a little bit on Friday. And it ended up... I can cut some grass with that thing, so...
So, any of the concerns that were talked about at the last meeting, or the meeting when we talked about the bat wing? Do you see any of that clipping out trees and doing things like that?
I don't have any issues with it. I don't... I have a lot of confidence in myself. I'm a pretty good operator.
Yeah, but would you be the one operating it?
I would train summer staff to do it. And it's so easy to use that I don't think there'd be an issue, so...
How much, like, time do you think it would cut out of the mowing?
I would say at least half. I'm just being kind of vague. I only used it a little bit. I didn't really time it out yet. I want to make up some forms and actually get a better idea of how much time it will cut out.
Do you still have it?
For the park, I still have it, yep. I talked to the Farm Supply today and I'll be able to keep it for a few weeks here.
Okay.
And be able to operate it and we'll really go through it and make sure it's something good.
Yeah, if you could put together like that spreadsheet to say like, "This is what it took us with one mower," in order to take with two mowers and then the bat wing and a mower with one person.
Yep.
And then...
That's exactly what I want to do.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, basically I want to use the whole park. It's a little getting used to, but once you get used to it, the whole way down, you can probably... Basically, I'm holding three mowers on it, so it works really well.
How did Farm Supply know that we were looking at one?
I got a bid from them originally, so they got a...
Is that where the presentation that you did, is that where the price...
That was from January. That was one I had from January, but I also got a quote from them.
Oh, you did, okay. All right, well, good. Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing the information on that. Something solid, that's good. All right, anything else for Kyle? And then City Engineer.
Madam Chair, Council members, you have Dave Martin's staff report in front of you. Also Dave is in attendance, so if you have any questions of him, of his staff report, I'm sure you'd be happy to answer them.
Where are we at on that wetland restoration?
You want me to?
Anyone? She's asking you.
No, I was gonna... Well, I was gonna give an update on Highway 25. You can take care of that.
Wetland restoration, we... I've met with Joel Winkmeyer again. He is going over some numbers on some of the restoration costs that we had gotten because he got a $90,000 quote. And he's thinking that he can find it maybe a little bit cheaper, so he was gonna come back with some of those numbers and we'll just get some. And then we'll... We can meet more like that. We're waiting on him.
And we also met with Tony a couple of times.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. With Paul Mullin and we've met with the county engineer also, because if you recall from the beginning, when we were doing the project in the beginning, we were gonna sell some of the wetland credits to them to get a cash flow. And so, we're looking at the numbers and trying to make a determination if they're even interested yet in purchasing any of the wetland credits from us. We could continue... We could hold them and wait and sell them out five years or whatever, but we just... It would be money for... In the future for us, not right now, so...
All right, Dave?
Yeah, Highway 25, just as you all, I'm sure, are aware, we've started construction out there. The original intent was that we were gonna do as much work off of the roadway on the Marilutheran side as possible. And originally, we were thinking that we'd be able to get that leg of the roundabout more or less done before we closed the road down. The rains really slowed things down. We had some utility coordination. So, long story short, the road is scheduled to be closed next Monday, so we're probably a little behind schedule from where we're hoping to be with that east leg of the roundabout. So hopefully things dry out and we keep making better progress, but it's a little slow going right now, so...
Anything else for the engineer? All right, Sheriff's Department, I don't think we had anything. City Administrator?
Madam Chair, Council members, you have my report in front of you for April 22nd through May... April 27th through May 22nd. And also attached is some information about community solar gardens that I... The mayor and I attended. Also, the general fund budget and where we're at at this time of the year. We're at 23% of the funds spent, and I... The only reason that we're... Next month, we should really be at 50%, but just to tell you, there's several line items that we haven't paid out yet. We haven't paid any money to the fire department. We haven't paid the sheriff's contract, so that's why that line is at 23%. It's not that we've underspent, why, that's a good thing, but I... Not all the line items have been spent either. And then on the revenue side, you can see we haven't gotten our local government aid or our first half of property taxes which should be coming in too.
So, on the elections, I thought we budgeted extra for... Because it was an election year.
We budgeted... We always have to have a little bit for printing and binding. We always have some of the...
That was my next one too, but I'm up by elections first on page two.
Okay.
It's like, we spent $1,000, but we budgeted $200, but I thought we knew that it was an election year and we budgeted more.
2015 isn't an election year.
How have we spent $1,000 then on...
Do you want to answer that?
Oh.
Because we spend my... We spend stuff on printing and binding that the county charges us for after the election...
Yeah.
After the 2014 year is over, is what it ends up being.
Mm.
And maybe cost us more than we anticipated.
Anticipating. A lot.
Almost $800 more.
Okay.
And I can get you that line item if you want me to.
Yeah.
Would you like to have a printout of it?
I guess that was the one I was talking about, yeah.
Yep.
And then on training and instruction in highways, streets, and roads.
Okay.
Four. I'll have that one started.
I will have to go and look at why we're...
I imagine it's... Has something to do with training.
How much is it? 747.
And we budgeted $200 for training.
Safety training comes out of there. Right. Let me go and... And can I get you an answer for the next meeting?
Sure, that'd be great.
And get you the line item for this one too? I think...
And maybe the miscellaneous. I just had that one underlined, but I don't know why.
Miscellaneous, which one type?
And, um, fire protection.
Hope I have that one. I can print that one out too for you.
Got anything else? Anybody else?
Mine was just... It wasn't over, but that due to subscription, what is... What is that? In the fire department?
The student subscriptions that the fire department pays for, um...
Like the... It used to be the smoke heater, now it's that.
Oh, okay.
And there's a couple magazines that come to the fire department and I can print that out quite a few things.
I wonder if they're yearly subscriptions, so that's why we're...
Yeah, Carver County Mutual Aid.
Okay. I was just curious because they're closed.
Peace Association, yep.
Anything else for Luann? All right. Now I have City Engineer again. You want to say more, Dave?
Yeah, he does.
Oh, all right.
He's given a word of the seal coating.
Oh, there it is. All right, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Madam Chair, Council members, City Engineer has solicited three quotes for the 2015 seal coating project. The low bidder was Pearson Brothers for $38,558.75. City Engineer will review the quotes with the council. The city did budget in the street's capital outlay for the seal coating project, and there's a amount of $40,913 in the street's capital outlay. Staff is recommending approval of Pearson Brothers in the amount of $38,558.75. We've had really good luck with Pearson Brothers. I think they've done our seal coatings for many, many years, so...
Dave?
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is Councilmember Osborne had asked about potentially fog sealing the cul-de-sacs when we were going out for this. I didn't include that in the bids, but I have called up with Pearson, just to talk to them a little bit about that. You know, their opinion is it does help in the cul-de-sacs where you get those training or the turning movements, you know, to help lock down the aggregates so you don't get so much of that tracking like we've experienced in the past, you know? When it's fresh, it kind of tends to roll around until it really gets set up. So the first year or so is a little tougher on those cul-de-sacs. Kind of going back and forth with them a little bit, it kind of sounds like we'd be in the range of a couple thousand dollars if we wanted to fog seal the two cul-de-sacs to try that out. So I just wanted to add that. If you had interest in doing that, I'd work with them and get a more exact price for you that we can bring back to the next council meeting. I think there's no doubt based on the bids that we'd go with Pearson, but then it's just a question of whether or not you'd like to see something in more detail about that fog sealing.
In your conversation with him, did he feel that over the period of seal coating that that helped a lot, or...
I don't know if it helped a lot. He said it does help. And I... My guess is that we're gonna see it more initially where we don't, you know? Eventually, once it kind of gets completely cured out, we don't see the material moving around. It's really... Initially, that first summer into the next spring where we see a lot of that. So I think if we could prevent some of that, there's a... It's a nuisance factor is what it is, you know? How big of a nuisance that is for people, um, I guess that's up to every individual, you know? I've had my street seal coated and I know I was tracking in those little black rocks for a long time.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, "Hold on," because I remember, I think even my curb, like, I had it in the spring from the snow pile.
Right.
All in my front yard.
Yep.
I guess that is a part that concerns me more than the tracking is the snow flying, you know? How it ties it up and holds it through the winter months of snow.
Well, if it's something you're interested in, what I'd suggest then is let me get a more detail of and a price that I can bring back to you and maybe I can answer those questions a little bit better than I can tonight.
Okay. Is there any of these streets that are gonna need any additional crack sealing before this is done?
Crack sealing's included in this.
It is, okay.
Yep. Now, I think there is some patching that needs to be done ahead of time that Kyle is aware of, so there is some coordination there.
So, who's doing the crack sealing? Is Pearson themselves doing it?
I don't believe so. I think they sub out for that. I'm not sure who they're working with.
Okay.
But it's included in their bid.
Okay.
All right, so it looks like we have budgeted $40,000, almost $41,000. And the Pearson Brothers quote is for $38,000, so even with the fog sealing around $2,000, we're gonna be still in there, so... Shall we have a motion to approve Pearson Brothers, or do you want to table this until we get all the numbers?
I... If I may, I'd suggest that you approve the contract for the base seal coating as it was bid, and then the fog sealing would be something that would be followed up.
Correct.
It's a separate operation. Anyway, that I could bring that back to you for your consideration at a future meeting.
Okay, so I'll call for a motion to approve Pearson Brothers to do the seal coating?
Make a motion to approve Pearson to do the seal coating.
Is there a second?
One second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then before I leave, just, is there anything else for me before I move on?
I just had one question about the roundabout.
Yep.
You know, sometimes they have construction signs for like businesses, like saying like the gas station is down here, or, you know, because I'm not sure how... It's only one block away, but...
The EDA did that.
What?
The EDA has some signs coming.
Okay, they're already here.
Okay.
I wasn't sure. I was just thinking about that when I was walking up here, that, you know, there's a lot more traffic and they actually could benefit from some of the detour of 10, knowing that there is a gas station one, like, just right over here.
Yeah, they did discuss that.
Yeah, I told you.
And then we'll have something on the electronic sign too, because now everybody's gonna be going past that both ways, so... Anything else for Dave? Are we gonna need him on street lighting, or...
No.
Okay.
I can take care of that.
All right.
Thank you.
Award for RFP for sanitation services, 7.1.
Madam Chair, Council members, at the April 27th, 2015 council meeting, city council authorized advertisement for bids for RFPs for sanitation services. The city has received three RFPs and staff has reviewed the RFPs for services offered and the cost to provide the service. I've attached a spreadsheet with the information. I'm just gonna briefly tell you a little bit about each one, what I saw in the RFP. Elite disposal, in the elite disposal RFP, the first line item on the spreadsheet does not include the cost for citywide cleanup in the container amounts. The cost for the citywide cleanup is an additional 64 cents per month for customers, and it's a total reflected in the next line on the spreadsheet. They are proposing to charge for battery disposal and then to use lamp tracker for disposal of fluorescent bulbs. They've attached a price list in their RFP which you could see. They're like $74.99 for lamp tracker, which is what we use now. Randy sanitation, the cost for containers for garbage recycling services only is reflected on the spreadsheet. They propose to complete a curbside pickup at a fee of $2,205 plus the 9.75 garbage tax of $214.99 for a total of $2,419.99. Disposal of fluorescent bulbs, per each bulb, $1.50 and $4 for batteries. And I'm not sure what that means, $4 for batteries, if that's a... What kind of container? Didn't really... Wasn't spelled out in the RFP. Waste management, the cost per containers for garbage and recycling services is reflected on the spreadsheet. They're proposing to do the citywide curbside cleanup at no charge, which is already included in the monthly service fees. They will continue to take fluorescent bulbs and batteries at no charge. I think that we've probably... They have probably given us in value $2,000 to $3,000 in fluorescent bulbs that they have recycled fluorescent plus batteries. The patch of the price sheets, I took the price sheets out of the RFP and I attached them to my memo, and I provided you with the full RFPs back behind my memo so that you had... You had to be able to look at it all. Overall, the waste management containers per month fees are lower than elites and randies. Waste management is proposing to continue to take the fluorescent bulbs and batteries at no cost. Like I said, the value of fluorescent bulbs and battery recycling just for 2015 that we added up is $1,222.78, and they've been doing this now for the past three to four years. Staff is recommending that the city enter into a five-year contract for sanitation services with waste management. There's representatives from the company here. I don't... I don't know whatever you... If you have any questions...
Yeah, I see waste management and elite.
I don't know if Randy's here.
Randys, okay.
Yep.
Um... I don't know if you want to have... I mean, does anybody want to ask questions of them? Um, I've kind of put a couple numbers together here and added them up. Now, I might be doing something wrong, but is the... Is the price of taxes and all the other charges in the waste management quotes?
No, that was a base rate.
That was a base rate?
That was a base rate.
So, but they are in the elite quote. How about the Randy sanitation quotes?
They're in there as the RFP has included.
Yeah, that's what... I mean, I saw in the RFP that it was supposed to be in the bid, so that kind of changes things.
What is the bait? Like, I'm not sure. I think I have a 32-gallon... What is the most typical that a resident usually... Does it matter? Or is it just...
64. 64 is probably what's in there.
You wouldn't have a 32. I wouldn't have a... I have a... My recycling is bigger than my garbage.
Can be.
So I think I have a 64.
Recycling is probably 64, right?
When we talk battery disposal, are we talking a five-gallon bucket that residents can stop and drop little batteries into?
Yeah, it was in a... It was, yes. Like, do you sell any batteries that you have?
How many of them do we use a year?
We've used one so far this year that we just sent in.
And as far as fluorescent bulbs, you said we do get those once in a while?
We've had... We've recycled a lot of fluorescent bulbs. In fact, all the ones, the 12-footers, I believe they were, from the wastewater plant from the UV disinfection, we were able to get rid of those. They provided us with a box, and those were all free.
I believe we had five of the eight-foot boxes and four of the four-foot boxes, if I'm not mistaken.
Could...
And I think two of these compact fluorescent bulbs we had this year.
So like the bulbs from homes, two people can bring those here and recycle them?
Madam, if I may, I have a hunch. I'm the owner, Troy Shute, president and owner of Elite Waste Disposal. We kind of took it upon ourselves, because we had a hunch that waste management's quote did not include taxes, so we did prepare a spreadsheet for you that outlines all of that, if I could present that. That would save, I would imagine, Ms. Murphy, a lot of time.
Yeah, I... You know, I would be happy if you want to table them and I can... We can bring it back to the next meeting too, and I can do the spreadsheet with taxes in it too.
Yeah, my... The... Just the numbers that I am putting together here are not...
They're almost numbers.
Are not what's on this spreadsheet. Like, if I look at 32 gallons for... Let me see, let me get it right. I write numbers all over the place and then I have to try to figure out why I wrote what I wrote. So, waste management's a 32-gallon, just regular rate, not a senior 1083, right? Randy sanitation, is there a charge for the citywide cleanup, or was that in the quote?
No, he's got it at $2,205 plus the garbage tax, the 9.75 tax of 214, so it becomes 22, whatever I said.
That's like a separate charge?
Yeah. And so, that's 64 cents in the elite one.
Right.
And waste management, it's included in theirs. It was like 50 cents the last time we did it.
Right. But I have... Okay, let's go, 32-gallon waste management. I had up to 1083 with, I don't know what I added in there to get to that. I'd say we need to table it and get it more organized.
Yep. You have to compare apples to apples, right?
Yep, and that's what I was trying to do with these numbers. And then I moved the 64 cents up to each person's here in elites.
Which is in this spreadsheet.
Yep.
Which is elite with citywide cleanup. The second one. Mm-hmm. But waste management wasn't 683, it was up to like 10-something.
I'd like to see more, yeah.
I can do that.
Let's go through the data.
Yep.
Okay. I'm really sorry that you guys had to come here and wait.
If you have any questions, you can answer them for the representative during the week or the two weeks, if you're ready to call.
Yeah. Same with you.
All right, and Luann has all your contact numbers?
I have all three of them.
Yeah, I think that's the best for this decision. Do I need a second to table that?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to table the award of the sanitation services. Any further discussion?
Just got one question regarding the fluorescent light bulb recycling. There's a charge if the city recycles them, correct? But can you drop those bulbs at any local retailer for them to recycle? Was there not something passed that they had to take those bulbs if they sold those bulbs?
Well, like, the Carver County Environmental, like, the environmental centers, they'll take them for free, but we were under the impression that your homeowners would want us to supply the service, so that they didn't want to have to drive anywhere to do it. But, yes, there's ways to get rid of it for free if they want to take them somewhere.
If they want to take them somewhere. I'm just...
Fleet Farm has a program, but you buy one, you bring a receipt, and they will take it back.
They'll take it back.
They have a bill card.
Yeah, well, I just... Maybe we need to...
From education.
Educate our residents on how to recycle properly to be cost effective.
And as far as the city's concerned though, that is free of charge. For the city itself, in our proposal, that is free of charge. We, when we, when we proposed the lamp after that for the residents, that if they just want to have, basically, they order it, the box comes to their house, they put it in the box, which is where they always take it out.
Okay, okay. Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization of signatures on construction agreement for street lighting.
Madam Chair, council members, staff contacted Excel Energy about the street lighting for the roundabout project. The next step in this process is to enter into a construction agreement with Excel Energy for the construction of the street lighting on the roundabout. The cost for the installation of the lighting is twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. This is twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This is a reduction of ten thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars from the original cost estimate of twenty-two thousand two twenty-three that was provided by Excel Energy. The city must also pay for the street lighting before construction can begin, so staff's requesting authorization of the city administrator's signature on the construction agreement for the street lighting and approval of a payment in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. When Randy called me about this, he called me to tell me that they were able to do some reconfiguration of the lights and some different lumens, and Mindet accepted that so they could eliminate a couple, some of the poles, so that's why the reduction in the cost.
Always nice.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion authorizing the administrator's signature on the construction agreement for the street lighting and approval of a payment to Excel Energy in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars?
We'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion?
Are these just like the highway ones or are they decorative?
Right, they're not decorative and they're, but they are black. He got me, he got black ones for us, so.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven point three, authorization to apply for electronic recycling grant.
Madam Chair, council members, city staff is recommending that the city council consider providing an electronics recycling event free to the city residents. City staff would like to apply for a grant from Carver County of a thousand dollars to be able to offer this event free to the residents. The event would be held the week before Saturday, June twentieth cleanup, or Monday, June fifteenth through the nineteenth. Staff would propose to collect electronics at city hall for the week. Carver County has offered to send in an intern at the end of the week to assist with the packaging and the recyclables. And attached to the scope and purpose of the solid waste grant program, I'm requesting council authorization to apply for the grant and to offer the residents of mayor a free electronics recycling event the week of June fifteenth through the nineteenth. We did this once before and had like, I think we had six or seven dealers that we filled up with computers and printers and all kinds of electronics. The county thinks, and they knew what, how, what the amount we had from the last one, so they think the thousand dollars will more than cover the expense to get rid of whatever we get, because the monitors are the only thing that it costs. The printers and the keyboards, those are all free to get rid of. So, and then we'd be hauling it to them, to their, to the environmental center in Chaska. So, I, we haven't done it now for probably four or five years.
Sounds like a good deal. Is there a motion to approve application of the grant?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven point four, approval of rental of screen for movies in the park.
Madam Chair, council members, park board is recommending that the city conduct a movie in the night, in the park night. They would like to do the movie on July eleventh, the same day, but at night of the, as the Rising Community Festival. Park board would like to rent a screen this year and further evaluate, evaluate whether it would be a good investment to purchase a screen next year. The cost for the rental of the movie screen for one night would be one thousand one hundred dollars. The company comes, sets the screen up, shows the movie, takes the screen down. Attaches the agreement for the outdoor movie screen. Park board will still need to decide on the movie for the night, but that will be an additional three hundred dollars for the license to show the movie. The staff's requesting authorization to sign the agreement with CNG Entertainment LLC and to pay half of the eleven hundred dollars a year, five hundred and fifty dollars for the screen, because the other half gets paid the night of. And then, we will have a community center available to us if it rains, so that would, this is where it would be held if it needs to be indoors.
Does it come with speakers so people can hear?
Yep.
Can we add the three hundred to the motion so we don't have to come back and do that?
Yep.
Because we know we're going to, there's a list of free movies that you can get, but they're really old and maybe we'll use that revenue, or that avenue if we ever do a movie in the park or something, but for this, it's the Rising Community Festival and a lot of people, and we wanted to have a more current movie, because they're really old, the ones that are free, and may not even have sound, know what they do.
I like the idea.
Some of them aren't rated, and so, yeah, we just wanted to have a.
How much is the screen?
Eleven, eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred for them to come out and set up and rent it for a one-time deal. The park board has on their CIP and in their plans, or in their goals, to actually purchase one of these screens, because we wanted to start doing some activities in the park and maybe use it for national night out and stuff like that, so.
How much is it to purchase?
About three thousand seven hundred, three thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, I think it was, but, yeah, between three and four.
So, the majority of the park board wanted to rent it first, try it, see if it's something that we want to purchase.
Are you thinking all these people are going to stay into the evening?
The Rising Community Festival has music, I'm not sure how, how late it goes.
It doesn't get dark until nine o'clock.
I understand.
Or you want food's going to be available then too?
Mm-hmm.
Not from the fire department.
You're correct. The Rising Community Festival is going to do some snacks and stuff like that, open it up in, in the concession stand. Their idea is to put it down by the baseball diamond and have people sit in the, in the diamond and watch the movie, and then we'll open up the concession stand and try to.
You know, the date's not bad, I mean, I feel like people are already going to be in town, and they may not be, they would have stayed in town for it and then just come back after they have dinner or whatever and come back into town.
It's a, it's a good way to advertise that we're doing it too, with all those people that are in town, they'll maybe bring their kids back. It's definitely going to be a family movie geared toward young kids, so.
How many people do you expect?
A hundred would be great.
I think it's a great idea. We don't do enough in this city, so I think it's a great idea.
For that amount of money, you can take a busload of a hundred kids to the Waconia Theater and they can sit and watch a brand-new movie and with no bugs.
Is there any idea on how hard the screen is to put up and take down?
They do it.
They do it, and it's inflatable.
Not if we purchase it.
Not if we purchase one like it, but.
If we're going to throw a thousand dollars out there, would we not want to try it? And if we liked it and it worked and it went over well, see if we could put that money towards the purchasing?
Because you're not purchasing, we wouldn't purchase.
Oh, we aren't purchasing, no, no, this is a company that rents them out, we couldn't.
Oh, you couldn't purchase it from them?
Right, right.
Can you, can you rent the screen and the equipment and just have somebody set it up? Or do you have, do they have to run it?
They run it, I think. They come and do it, it's theirs to do. They don't want, I think they don't want anybody else doing it, probably.
I like the idea, I think it's a good time to do it, it's just so much money.
Mm-hmm. It was a big discussion on the park board and.
I mean, is there a local vendor that you might be able to demo one from, maybe? So, there's a specific time you're looking to purchase one?
I don't think you can, yeah, I don't think you can demo them. I don't think they'll do that, I mean, why would they?
What does TJ use? This is what City of Carver used when they did theirs, so.
Uses like a sheet and then uses projector. We cut, you guys kind of did that for the night out, national night out. I mean, I guess that it's expensive, I just, I agree that we need to do something more.
Honestly, I wanted to purchase it right, straight out, because I think we'll use it, and I, I do think it's a big amount of money to throw at just a rental, and we could just purchase it and we'll use it for national night out, we'll use it for this, we'll do some things in the park. I mean, over, if you use it three times, you have it paid for. But the park board did not agree with that, so I have to bring you guys what they, what they proposed, and this is what they proposed.
I mean, I'd almost more, because I buy into it, I do.
But that's where I'm, I was more, and then you guys have a good point about, it is expensive and it's a third of what it would cost to buy and just to rent it, so I totally agree with that.
And it is in our CIP and in our budget. We plan to buy it this year, so.
There's so many things we could do with it too on this.
The purchase of a screen for three thousand dollars is only the screen, correct? And then you'd have to have the equipment that you have to move.
Was it the speakers too? And that's, that's the other thing too, you do have to have like a projector or whatever, but that's just a DVD player and a, you know.
Our projector was working then.
Yeah.
This one would?
Yeah, that's what we used last time.
Okay.
That and the laptop.
Will the resolution go that high on a technical screen?
I don't know, I don't think it'll do that.
Like, how big is the screen that we would purchase?
I think the same size as this.
What, and does it say what?
Because that was one of the things that I looked at when I wanted to just purchase it instead of renting one, but I thought it was the same size, Lynn.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just feel like we need to do more, I mean, like the City of, really is Facebook page, and they're just doing stuff all the time, and they're very similar in size, and it's like, I feel like we never do anything for our community and.
Well, I don't think you'd have an argument from the park board on that. I mean, and that's what they're trying to do, just that the majority of them felt that they wanted to throw the money into renting one first, so. And the other, the other thing is this, I mean, we want to use it for July thirteenth. By the time we now take it back, if we would deny this, we take it back to park board, they, you know, try to purchase one, and then they have to get the movie, which we do anyway, and then they have to see if the equipment works with it, and we will need speakers. So, we're looking at about a thirty-seven hundred dollar purchase.
I guess my, that's my question, is what is the true cost of everything that we're going to need? The speakers, the projector?
With the audio system we have, would that, do we make that work?
I don't know. We did it the last time, but.
What audio system was?
We used the, the big speakers, that was huge, big things, remember?
From the Club for Kids?
Mm-hmm.
They worked. I mean, I know they worked, but I didn't know they had the technology, like, they could still be.
Right, I think that's what.
That's all we need then.
That's what Stifter, that's what Stifter uses when he helps.
We have a PA that goes with that too.
Maybe, can we, can somebody maybe look and see what a s, a screen would cost us?
Sure.
I mean, is there, I mean, is there a time to do that? Because I agree, I think the Rising Community Festival is, is time to do that.
And, I mean, we'll use it for, I don't, I didn't stay for the national night out just because it was a weeknight, you know, and it would have been too late for my kids to be up at that time, because we, they'd have to get up, but, I, I mean, I just think that's such a fun way to get people here, and if there's, you know, but, I, you know, now that you say, that is a lot of money to rent.
The park board, I think, wanted to see how many people would even attend before they laid out all that money.
But every year you do something, you're out, the first year is always going to be the hardest year, and then once people learn about it, that happened with us with the Fireman's Open House. The first year was really low turnout, the second year we did it, it was a huge success, and then we have to wait another two years to do it again. So, this fall, we'll do it again, because it'll be every two years, was what the fire department had decided, but you just have to, you have to make it through that first year to get people to be like excited and be like, crap, I missed that, and then come, and unfortunately, the first year is probably always going to be lower than you really, really want, you know? But maybe with this new communication that Megan's going to be doing, that will help too. I think that's our biggest drawback is getting the word out to people.
So, next park board meeting is June sixth, June ninth, and then council the next week? No, council the day.
The eighth and the twenty-second.
So, that's the end of June before that gets approved, and that gives us about two weeks to get the thing here and get it organized. I don't know what the lead time was on the ones that we looked at, we just knew the prices.
And did, but did it work last year when we did the makeshift one for national night out?
With the sheet, which we still have the sheet.
I mean, why can't we try that if we decide, if it goes back to park board and we can't get one in the two weeks? We still have the movie.
I'd rather use the sheet than rent one, to be honest, for a thousand dollars, but I'd rather have one than have a sheet.
But have like a backup plan, that's, the sheet's the backup plan if you can't get one, if the park board decides.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, yeah.
I can't imagine once you order, you can probably get it pretty fast, you know, the Smith label thing in the warehouse somewhere.
You know, because then we can maybe get it put in the museum.
And is that something that has to go back to the park board if the council decides they want to purchase it versus renting it?
I would think that it, it doesn't have to, but.
It should.
Yes, it should. But then, now my question to you, then, if we're going to buy it, who's going to staff it and set the movie up and take it down and project the movie and spend a Saturday night doing that?
Well, that would be the question, you know, no matter what.
I'll let the intern.
Ha, 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 what? Can't say no. That's not in your job description. For the Rising Community Festival, I imagine that committee would do it.
Okay.
You know, national night out, well.
Jake did it last time.
There's always people that can set up technology.
I think we just need to ask those questions and find out if that's doable.
What?
Purchasing it and getting someone, you know, if Jake wants to use it for national night out, um, the fire department wants to use it for their open house, you know, you got the Rising, uh.
You can do things indoors with it too, in the wintertime, you can have kids, you know, have.
I think it'd be, I just feel like we just, we don't do enough.
Yeah, I'd.
And it's such a great opportunity, and we could even do safety things on it.
One question it does bring up is licensing.
Actually, how do you do it?
That's the, that's the three hundred.
That's the three hundred dollars.
That will be all, every time?
Every time you show a movie that isn't in the free.
So many years old, I don't remember.
No, but, there's some other ones too that had some copyright problems, and then they get kicked into the free ones too. So, I found someone that were younger, but still, they're, they're still all old.
Say you got a movie, you paid the three hundred dollars for a movie, is that something that you, it's a one-time?
On one day only, it had to go back exactly the next day, last year for a national night out.
It stinks. It stinks that you can't, and maybe you can join some sort of a group, we'll see how many times we do it. Maybe you can join a group and you pay so much per whatever, per year.
We have to just have access to it or something, yeah.
Yeah, but if those fees are too high, then that's not worth it either, so.
Is that something that you could get a price on the screen and availability in the next meeting?
Sure.
Do you think that's too big of a setback to still make the July deadline?
We do it on the June eighth meeting?
Yeah, no, that's going to be fine.
Okay.
So, the park board will come with a new recommendation?
No, he's wanting it for the eighth, the June, your meeting's the ninth. Oh, so I guess the city council could decide if you wanted to purchase it at your meeting, and then we can take it to the park board on the ninth to let them know, and if there's a lot of opposition to it, then we won't.
Then we don't do it.
Does that sound okay? For June eighth meeting.
Thank you.
To make sure that we can hook it up with like a lot, you know, speakers and stuff that, that, that whole process.
Does this going to work?
All right, approval of prizes for the Mayor Moxie five K run.
Madam Chair, council members, park board is hosting its third annual Mayor Moxie five K run. The park board would like to offer fifty dollars to each male and female in the following categories, ten to twenty-five, thirty to forty-nine, and fifty and older. The total of the prizes would be three hundred dollars. Staffs recommending approval of prizes for the Mayor Moxie five K in the amount of three hundred dollars. This money usually comes out of the fees that are paid to, from the entrance fees. We currently only have two people sign up.
Or you'll have more at the end of the season.
So, I, I don't know what the cutoff's going to be for, I guess the park board's going to have to, I don't know.
We typically are okay on the entry fees, it pays for itself or even makes a little bit of money, plus the Moxie program is bigger this year, and I think she really is promoting it, and I'm thinking a bunch of those people will join too. We kind of are in the same boat every year when we approve this. We don't have any registrants until the last week, so I'd like a motion to approve the prizes for the Mayor Moxie five K in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Is it possible?
Any further discussion? And again, this is already in, we already have the money for this based on the registrations for the Moxie program, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public Works on-call policy.
Madam Chair, council members, this is a continuation of the council review of the city of mayor policies. Attached are the Public Works on-call policy, sidewalk inspection policy, and the snowplowing and ice control policy. Staff is requesting discussion specifically on item two on the on-call policy relating to the response time, and then review of the sidewalk inspection policy and snowplowing policy, snowplowing and ice control policy with any recommended changes, and then a motion approving the policies. So, that was one of the questions. I did go through this and, and added some things to the Public Works on-call policy. I was not able to find a sample policy anyplace, but I know there was a question about response time, and I just put staff will respond within a reasonable period of time to any alarms, and, and that's pretty subjective, I don't know if you want to put one hour or if you want to be more specific, you certainly could.
So, does anybody want to put an actual time in there? I mean, reasonable to some, as we all know, is not reasonable to others, especially the person on call.
So, we had issues with that?
We did, and that's why we have a policy, because that employee is no longer here.
Well, there are no examples from the league at all or anything?
I went out and looked and couldn't find anything, no.
I just, still, I think that's just kind of a touch of. I, I still, I think that's just kind of a touchy s- subject, maybe the city attorney or something they have to say?
I didn't touch him, no. Do you want me to, I can.
I, I think I would because, you know, there is, staff's totally retention, we can't, can't do this with that stuff, at all times.
Did you look in the insurance policy for that callback?
I did, and I looked in the Senator Shure policy, thinking it was in there, and it wasn't in there either. Maybe, no.
So, who are all the on-call people, just because I want to make sure, so are you...
Kyle?
I'm ninety-nine percent of the time, and then likewise, Greg's building every now and then he'll be, like, I don't know, he's not here, and then, uh, um, so, two other people, so, like, during the week, it's always me, and then be like thirty-two, thirty-three, and then, uh, two other guys, so, it's like that one.
Well, if we, if it's okay, I would like to set at least some kind of a time in there. To me, two hours isn't reasonable, one hour's really kind of pushing it. I don't think you should go further than an hour away.
And then I'll put your alarm this year.
Yeah, so...
I'll do some input from the attorney, so...
Okay, I will ask him, and then I'll bring it back.
And then, on number seven, you just omitted the word "by," B Y., after "set."
Okay.
Okay. Um, now, let's go to sidewalk inspection and maintenance policy. And my question there was, do we do surveys? What did I write? Do we do surveys? Why can't we send a necessary sidewalk survey? Oh, you survey them?
Yeah, mhm, he, he reviews them.
And then is there like a thing like you have for the playground, you know, where you check off what you see?
Check things out?
No.
You just kind of look at them and make sure?
Right, like when you're snow plowing or sweeping them off, sweeping them or whatever. Or someone will call and report something.
I just have a question. The homeowner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their home, like in, like Cold Water?
Yep.
Now, do we have, I, I know this is not, it's the same policy, but a lot of cities have where like you have to pay a fine if it's not...
I don't know, if you look at the city code of talks in there about keeping them clear, and I don't think we find people yet. Some, some cities, if they don't follow them off, and the city has to do it, they send them the bill.
Yeah, because like in Prairie, need has to do it by a certain time for some of our homeowners, otherwise they get charged forty dollars. And it's like that day that's not cleared. I was just curious, if we have, not that I want to do it, I just...
So, on number two A., is that right, an initial citywide survey completed by June first, two thousand sixteen, or, two thousand six?
No, well, there probably was one completed.
Right.
Whether it was documented or not, I don't know. Because if you remember in oh seven...
So, does that stay in this?
Well, I suppose it could come out, but it tells you when we did the initial survey.
Right, is that when the sidewalks were new?
Oh seven, they were downtown.
So, this is oh six.
Yeah, it was done before that. We can just take that out if you want, and you probably should.
And then, do you have a...
Just take the date out and just make sure that every year it's done by June first.
Okay, that's okay too. And so, now, that takes care of B., therefore, there is a schedule to do it, June first, and then, do you have criteria determining whether the sidewalk is all right? And in number C., it says that there's a list of criteria.
Right, it can't be, it, you look for, what you look for are like heat, so if there's a heat in the sidewalk, or if there's pieces of sidewalk missing, or, that's what you look for, uneven surfaces. And I would imagine that Kyle would do that when he's downtown.
Okay, so that's nothing that needs to be like written down?
No, no.
That is just something that you do. I think that's all I had on that one.
I can make those changes if you want to approve it.
Do we have any, anything regarding trail maintenance inspections?
No.
That's more of a visual thing, uh, the sidewalk, like when we're out mowing everything, usually, if there's like a pothole or something, pick it up on the tree, but, although I think you call, you get called pretty quick, figure out, like, no, I don't have a law or anything like that.
Because we're referring to a lot of the trails in these neighborhoods as sidewalks.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yet we don't have any criteria for maintenance on them.
What, I think this would fit, because it's a sidewalk.
Any schedule for maintenance.
These are sidewalks, considered sidewalks, kind of, where there are more trails, so...
Can you just change it to say sidewalks slash trails? And it's included in...
Then that would, then this policy has to be included in all the trails, whether they're in the additions or not, which, we should have something for trails.
I think we should.
Because there's some that have some issues, I wrote down.
Yeah, I think we should include, I don't know if you want to include it in the same thing or...
Or get a separate policy.
You know, you could mark like number ten sidewalk slash trails.
Let's let me do a little research and see what I can find, if other communities have anything on trails.
Okay.
I'll just not do anything with this.
All right. Snow plowing and ice control policy.
You had reviewed this last year in June, I believe it was. It was adopted while it was last year, in June. We reviewed it at that time and made some changes to it, back then.
Does anybody see anything on this one? I did not. So, motion to approve the snow plowing and ice control policy would be in order.
Make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Motion's been made, second to approve the, uh, snow plowing and ice control policy. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carried. I was going to talk about the trails in the, are you staying for the work session? What is the deal with, uh, right across from the lumberyard, the trail, what happened to it?
It's really thin. We were already talking about where the, like, something's drawn through it.
There's like all these holes in it and...
Yeah, so, there's...
I noticed it a couple of months ago and I...
I don't know what, it's, I, I'm assuming it's really thin, drinking that spot. It's probably one of, when I looked at it a couple of times, and it looked like the blacktop on ice, that thick, and it's something drawn through it, and that's what the little holes are from.
So, would that be on any schedule to be repaired?
I, uh, we...
Because isn't it getting it bad enough that, I got pictures of it, I'm just trying to find it, I'm not texting.
Is this the, is this the path that goes down, kind of dips down?
Uh, right across from the lumberyard.
From the old person, I don't know.
Okay. Haven't been on that for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's, there's...
It was like that?
Kind of like, well, it's, it's like, something's drawn through it.
It's been like that?
I knocked it out with the leader, you know, or...
I think it's been like that since last year though, and it's just a whole stretch of it that has got like these holes in it.
Yeah, we can get it a little bit thicker, yeah, it's...
So, it'll keep coming?
Well, if we put it on thicker, I think it'd be a lot better.
There they are.
At least, at least, uh...
I want to see the... Would that be something that got ruined when it, out of that last flooding right there?
Oh, maybe, it's...
Underneath got washed by them.
Yeah, it, I know it's, there's been a few, I know it's been a few spots on the trails, like, like a little puddle.
This one and then this one. Yeah, now, now that you...
So, maybe, maybe we should do that, have you do a whole trail inspection, and we'll get a price and all the, to repair it, both. Because I know Meadow Park too, when you go down that hill, that's bad, so, it has been for years.
All right, are there any other council reports?
The community had was canceled, so, I don't think they have any.